And when he got, same thing.
The March 16th, 2020 emergency meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Thoreau, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Stanford Bridge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm now asked to school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 4:15 PM. The speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. Thank you.
Are there any speakers?
Just one. Mr. Scott Quintel.
Donald Trump and then said we're not allowed to have 10 or more people in a room. It was, it's not anymore. Now it's 10. As of this afternoon.
Good morning, members of the, or good afternoon, members of the school board. Scott Quintel with United Way in Marion County. Our office address is 1401 Northeast Second Street here in Ocala. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. You have been making some very difficult decisions in a very difficult time. And I'm here to let you know that United Way is here to support and assist the school district in any way that it can. We are very focused right now on serving some of the financially challenged families that we have in here in Marion County. And we know that there will be some challenges for them as it pertains to basic necessities such as food and other items that they may need. So we look forward to partnering with the school district. I've had some conversation with Ms. McCall a little bit last week and some other organizations that also want to be a part of that conversation. So I know you'll be making some tough decisions and having some conversations today. We'll follow back up with you after this meeting. If there's any ways we can assist you in assisting those families here in Marion County with children in the school district, we look forward to working together on that partnership. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much, Ms. Quintel. And definitely thank you. This is a difficult time, so we will be probably getting in contact with you in the very, very near future.
Well, absolutely. We look forward to that. And you know, our organization belief is that when we all come together to work on issues like this, we're going to be stronger, we're going to be smarter, and serve the community better. So we've had a long history of working with the school district in many ways, and so this will just be another one of those opportunities. So thanks.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers out there in the hallway?
Melissa Meriwether.
Over.
Just one more.
There's a little time lapse. Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Melissa Meriwether. I represent Marion, sorry, Marion Essential Support Personnel. I am the non-instructional president. I'm not going to state my address because it is exempt. Do you need my phone number? I'm here speaking on behalf of non-instructional staff, and it is my understanding that there will not be a change in pay. People will be paid, but if we say make up those four days at the end of the year, people having been paid for it already, then would not be being paid for it on the back end, of course. They work those days understanding that they've already been paid for it. Is that the correct understanding?
You're not going to get a, you're not going to get a response on that. So you can state what you need to state.
Okay. So it is our position that the non-instructional staff should not be working outside of our contract. We need to be held to our contract. If something arises and we can work something out to work within that contract, that we understand that that may be necessary. If however, say we have instructional staff out and they are being paid and then non-instructional staff would not be paid, that is something that we would have an issue with. We do have an intent to bargain, which has already been presented. We've already put that in an email out, and that way we can figure out what's going on. Because what I'm not sure of, I know that in some places they're extending this. And I don't know what that's going to look like for us. They're extending the time off. I heard there's some city in New York, and I want to say three places that I've heard of that are extending to eight weeks.
Outside of Florida.
Outside of Florida, yes. Not in Florida yet. But as it happened, shutdowns in other places first, I don't know what that will mean for us, as I'm sure you don't yet either. But hopefully we'll have some news soon, and I look forward to working with you all to figure out what we can do to make sure that all of our students' needs are met and all of our employees' needs are met. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak? I'm asking Dr. Dawson to come on up. She and I talked.
Good afternoon, school board members, superintendent. I am Gwendolyn Dawson, CEO with the Ocala Housing Authority. We own several subsidized housing properties. We also have families who receive vouchers that are residing at other subsidized housing properties. And so I had contacted Chairman Cummings to request some type of arrangement for food to be delivered at those sites for those children, because there are quite a few. So he invited me to present to you our demographics to, for consideration. We do have community centers located at our sites, and the other subsidized housing properties also have community centers. So I don't know what the plan is, but I would like to present those demographics if you all are amenable. Okay. All righty. I have them all here. I also requested that Jotar Management submit their information to me as well, so I could present those demographics to you. For the public housing sites, we have four. We have Deer Run, which is next door to Vanguard High School. We have Pavilion Oaks, which is down the street from Vanguard High School. We have Shady Hollow, which is behind Sunny's on 200. And we have Pine Gardens, which is next door to the main post office. But we have very few children at that site. So in total, I actually have the children by ages, but I'll just give you the grand total. The grand total is 267 students who reside in our subsidized housing properties. And then I also have, and I do have the breakdown by age. And I also have the breakdown from Jotar Management. They own Laura Park, Green Gable, Steeplechase, and Blishton Station. So I reached out to them because I know they would have the same impact as we do. And they have given me that information. And it looks like they have a total of, well, she didn't add it up for me, but it looks like about close to 300 students that are at Phase One and Phase Two. And then they have, they also have at the other properties, it looks like, she didn't give it to me in the same format, so bear with me. It looks like about 160 children at the other site. And it looks about 145 at another site. So there are quite a few children at subsidized housing properties throughout Marion County. Well, actually within the city limits. All of those properties are within the city limits of our school district. So I want to make sure she sent me all of her properties, because she just sent it to me while I was en route. Yeah, it looks like that's, that's all of hers. So as you can see, there's a big need with children living in subsidized housing properties. They really depend on the school district for their food, for breakfast and for lunch. I don't know what the plans are for breakfast, but if we could at least get lunch delivered, that would be great. We could arrange and coordinate the delivery, whether it be at our community centers. And I could have staff there to assist, but I want to keep the social distances as much as possible. So we could, we could coordinate and figure all that out. But I just wanted to present that information so that we could at least have it on the table for you to discuss.
Dr. Dawson, I have a quick question. When you said students, are you talking about all children or just students? Like, what are, is it all A?
The majority of them are students, kindergarten through 12th grade.
So you did not include?
Mine are broken down that way, but Jotars aren't. For public housing, the four sites we own, they are broken down by students. But Jotar only broke it down by female and male. But this was a last-minute request to them, so I could have them break it down by students as well.
You, children?
Yes. Because I understand you're, the only issue with that, and I know it's not the school district's responsibility, if I have a family with five children, two are under school age, three are school age, how do I give food to the three school age and not the two non-school age?
Right.
I could not separate that, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
I just couldn't.
And Dr. Dawson, thank you, because she just reached out to me a little bit after noon today. And I told her to get this information because we're going to need it. It was something that I hadn't thought about. I've thought about some other things, but that was a different avenue. So please get with Dr. Grantham. He's right behind you. Make sure we get those demographics, because I'm sure you, as well as Mr. Quintel from the United Way, are probably going to be helping us in something, some strategic plan that we're going to have to come up with in the next few minutes.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. And we're practicing social distance, that's why it's like this.
I'd just like to tell you one more thing. The Housing Authority, because we do serve about 2,000 families in Marion County, just so you'll know, because you come in contact with different families and individuals in the community, we are closing our office to the public. We are doing all of our appointments by telephone. And we do have a, the office building is set up where we have a foyer that separates between two doors. So we're allowing families to pick up documents and to drop off documents in that area. We are still holding our Section 8 waiting list opening on Wednesday. It is online only, so families won't have to come in. Those who have reasonable accommodations requests, we're setting up to call them rather than them coming into our office. So since this is a good forum to announce that, I wanted to make sure that got out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Any, any others, Dr. Grantham?
I'll check.
Okay. Before we start, this meeting has been called today to provide updates in regards to the Marion County School District's response to the COVID-19 virus, also known as the coronavirus pandemic. I can assure you that the safety of our students and staff is our first priority. I can also assure you that we, as a board, will do what is necessary to take care of our students and staff. I do want to let the public know this is not a time for panicking or for us to create any unwarranted hysteria, but a time to inform the public and to stay current with updates concerning this virus. It is vital to follow the federal and state recommendations sent down from Washington DC and Tallahassee, Florida. For the record, this situation is a very fluid situation that requires all of us to be flexible and ready to change course at a moment's notice. Today, we plan to discuss several issues in regard to the district's pandemic plan and what we want to do to support our students and staff and the people of Marion County. May I have a motion to discuss COVID-19 updates?
I'm oohed.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau, seconded by Ms. King. All in favor by I.
I.
Unanimous discussion. We know that things changed rapidly on Friday. We got notice from the superintendent and Commissioner Corcoran that we needed to make some changes. We had been getting some changes periodically prior to Friday concerning extracurricular activities and things like that. So I'm going to let Dr. Mayer kind of get, bring us up to speed to where we are.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And you summed it up perfectly. On Friday afternoon, we received an email saying that the commissioner would be having a 4:00 PM conference call. When that email came out, there was no phone number attached and no mini-agenda, so we figured something big was, was going to hit, and it did. When the conference call started, the commissioner introduced the governor, who spoke for a few minutes. Then the commissioner came back on the line, and that's when he shared that all school districts, all schools in the state of Florida would be closed for the next two weeks, including those who may have their spring break later on in April or other dates. They were to immediately change all that and move to the last two weeks of March. So we had a small group of folks around the table. It was me, Dr. Grantham, Andrea Simmons, our school nurse, district-level school nurse, Ms. Boston Ellis, Mr. Christian. So we immediately, our main priority at that time was to come up with messaging to get out, knowing everybody was going on spring break, so that folks would know that next week there is no school. After that, we went into planning mode with priority being how we would feed these kids that need us. And then after that, we would take care of academics as well as take care of our staff and what we would do with that. From the information we, we got Friday, folks worked over the weekend, folks were working this morning. And as Reverend Cummings said, things, things are still fluid. When Ms. Boston Ellis comes in to present, she'll also share with you information on not only how we will take care of feeding the kids next week, but also statute and practices about how we pay folks and the expectations for that. As of right now, we do not know when the time will be made up, if it will be made up. So I emailed you the chancellor commissioner's letter, and I'll pass that hard copy around to you. So truly, it does change, it does change every, about every 15 minutes, doesn't it, Chair? So our commitment to you is to keep you informed and to move forward, as we said today, Reverend Cummings and I, when we were at the county commission, that we'll move forward with recommendations based on our relationship, excellent relationship with the Department of Health, Mr. Lander, and our emergency management center, and Mr. Boland there in the back. And again, I need the public to know how incredible these two agencies have been with us over this entire time. The communication is superlative. Even Friday night, when I was with Ms. Cruz and we were 8:30, 9 o'clock crafting a message to get out to her, her school team, Mr. Lander and his PIO were on the phone with us. Mr. Christian was on the phone with us in between flights to Tennessee. So everybody truly is working together, and I want to assure the public that the message that you're hearing is one message. And everybody is looking out for each other. So Chair, if, would this be a time for Mr. Boland, or?
And let me say too, for the record, we did meet with the county commission, Commissioner Bryant today, myself, superintendent, Mr. Boland, and Mr. Lander. We did a public information, PSA, public service announcement today, so that is going out. But even since that PSA has gone out, things changed. This morning, it was a certain number, and now it's a different number. So this is a real fluid situation. So, Mr. Boland.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Boland Emergency Management Director, for the record. As Dr. Mayer said, is, everything is very fluid, and things are changing on a daily basis. I will tell you that it's been around the clock for the last two weeks with the Health Department, with CDC, with Tallahassee. And we are doing everything that we can to keep the information flowing, resources to our hospitals, our EMS, and our public safety. And so as of this afternoon, we went ahead and we did sign a local state of emergency for Marion County. And again, I want everybody to make sure they understand that not to panic with that, that we're not at DEFCON 2, that the reason why we do the local state of emergency is to be able to free up government agencies and entities, you know, where they would normally have certain spending procurement procedures or policies. It gives these agencies the ability to go ahead and spend outside of those contracts or those policies. For preventive measures, it gives me a little bit more political authority to be able to make certain things happen if need be. So at this point here, it is preventive measures. We also got a message from Tallahassee today that most of the policymakers you should have gotten is the PA, public assistance, you know, for reimbursements was opened up. And the good thing is, we did not have to reach a threshold for Marion County, so that was opened up as well. So probably at this time here is, Florida Department of Health is the lead agency for, you know, maneuvering this event, this COVID-19 event. We are working, like I said, with them to supply them with the resources and their needs. The same thing, we open that up to all our partners and stakeholders as what your needs are. If there's needs there, if there's things that you can't get, you know, is to contact my office, and we will work, you know, with the state in providing, you know, those resources as well. Our primary responsibility right now is with the hospital systems, is making sure they have everything they need to deal with this. The second part is, we're working on trying to work on some screening and testings to be able to get that influx or that surge of people going to the ERs and inundating the ERs with the sniffling, the sneezing, the coughing, the fevers, screen them and keep them out of the ER so we don't contaminate our hospitals. So we were working on something with the Health Department this week and our community healthcare partners to be able to provide, you know, that type of service. And it's, we just had the meeting just before this meeting here. So that's, we're diligently working on that this week.
Thank you, Ms. Boland. I know you, he wasn't, Preston wasn't expecting to be here, because he was supposed to be at another meeting, he and Mr. Lander. So I thank you for rushing over here to come and present. It's important that we be as transparent as we can be, so the public is comfortable moving forward. This is, this is unprecedented, guys. We're in some, we're in some challenging waters.
And the thing that I want to emphasize the most about this is, Dr. Mayer and I were having a conversation earlier, is this event is not a sprint.
Right.
It's going to be a marathon.
Yeah.
We're going to have to deal with this for a little while. We're taking every preventive measures. The biggest thing is educating about sanitary hygiene. The biggest thing is that social distancing, but wash your hands with soap and water, wash your hands with soap and water, and wash your hands with soap and water. And, you know, it's just that education. And with a couple of y'all, I've had that conversations too, is you, you all as an educational agency can have the biggest impact on Marion County to have all these students in Marion County. If we can educate them and teach them about when they come back into the school, you know, if we're still dealing with this, is practice, demonstrate, educate, and then have them take that home and tell them to do the same with their parents and their siblings and so forth, is to get that message out Marion, you know, throughout all of Marion County. So again, the biggest thing is our vulnerability is what we're looking at is, you know, our elderly, you know, those, you know, 55-plus, those in the traveling, those, you know, that met those, you know, travel advisories and so forth. And most of them are the ones that have those underlying health conditions that, you know, excavate it and make it worse, you know, once they, you know, come in contact with this virus. So other than that, is just, you know, stay tuned to the Health Department's, you know, as I push those informations out. They've gotten a little bit behind today, trying to get some of that information out. But as I get it, I'll be forwarding it to all our policymakers and elected officials and, you know, follow those guidelines. And if you, as always, if you have any questions, concerns, please call me. And, you know, as the social media, it's just crazy, you know, the stuff that's out there, majority of it is false, you know, that is out there. So again, you know, choose your media sources wisely. And if you have any questions or rumors, please call me, and, you know, we'll get to the bottom of it.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
You guys have any questions?
I did hear two doctors talking, I guess it was yesterday, and again this morning, on the news about people using hand sanitizers. I always thought if you use a hand sanitizer, you're fine. You have to rinse it off. You don't just put it on.
Well, the hand sanitizer, if you don't have anything else, it's better than nothing.
Right. But they say go wash it off, because then that, because it does kill virus, but dead, the killed virus can also be effective. You know, it's kind of what they make immunizations out of too. So you can get something back from a killed virus in numbers, and they said that you should. If you use hand sanitizer, that's good, but as soon as you get a chance, go wash your hands and get the dead virus off your hands. So just, that's just information I didn't know, I'm just sharing that I just, I just heard.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Thanks.
When it comes, when it comes to also to, you know, if the district is in the process of purchasing personal protective equipment, remember, if you're purchasing mask, it needs to be the N95 mask. You know, just surgical masks, this, you know, the type of masks are not going to be efficient.
What kind of mask is it?
N95. And just remember too, is there's three different sizes for N95. There's a small, there's a regular, and then there's a large. Majority of people are regulars. But again, in the healthcare facility, in the healthcare industry, you have to be actually tested and fitted to make sure that you have the right-sized mask. With that, with that being said.
Any other, any other comments? Any other comments, guys, questions?
I just want to thank you as well, because we were, I think, one of the first agencies to put in our request for some items, and Ms. Boss, as soon as you announced that, the meeting, Ms. Boston Ellis pulled together what supplies we will need and got it right to Mr. Boland.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
In an effort to make sure that we try to stay ahead or stay current with this thing, we went ahead and asked Dr. Grantham and his team to update our pandemic plans. So, Dr. Grantham, you want to come and get your folk?
I don't know the appropriate way to pass it out, so I'm just going to do that.
Yeah, your arms not six foot.
I'm like, is social distancing really working when she touches it?
Yeah, I don't.
And then it goes, and, yeah, and now whatever she's touched, I've touched.
We'll just trust her all will.
I did wash my hands, not with a hand sanitizer.
I'll wash it off next time, Ms. Stacy.
You want your folk in with you, ma'am?
Not yet. I'm going to bring them in, and then I'm going to try to keep it a ten or less as we, as we go.
Preston, you have one on?
Yes, sir, thank you.
So I never thought I'd be responsible for a pandemic action plan for a school district, but we, about three weeks ago, this was brought to our attention, so we started this. And we had one that was board approved in 2005, and it was regarding the flu, which is much different, so we had to change just the communication. So in 2005, it was a letter from the superintendent, we know that's not very effective, you know, in 2020. So I do want to draw your attention to a few things. I'm certainly not going to read this line by line, but I do want you to look at, you know, this draft is all over it. And Reverend Cummings and we, us had a conversation today about when do we get this board approved? Well, the timeliness of this could be probably the next board meeting or something like that. So I do want you to see that first asterisk on the first page, it's very small, but I do want you to know, if the EOC, if the, if the Department of Health, or if the governor, someone takes over, this is null and void. So I do want to stress that, and I'll give you an example of how that happens in a few minutes. But if they come in and say, we got it, our plan's out. We follow their plan, just, just to be clear on that. So you can look at page two, a lot of verbiage there. Ms. Dobbins is the person that will be the point of contact. So there's two things. This was written by a team, it was updated from the 2005 edition. Ms. Dobbins is the point of contact. I do want you to look at page three. Those are the people on the committee for the pandemic, pandemic action committee. If we needed to make a decision, this team comes together. For example, the wording that Kevin uses in his scripts, he reads that aloud, and we go through, you need to say this, and you, so that whole group looks at it with their lens. So for example, I'm just going to pick on one person, Lori Lively's there. She makes sure from a risk point of view that we're taken care of and protected by what Kevin says, or what we email, and that kind of stuff. So all of these people are very intentionally placed and wear their particular hats, so that when we send a message out or we communicate, we're doing, doing the right thing. If you look at four, that's from the Department of Health, we really can't do a whole lot about that. So according to where we are right now, we should be in level three, which is surveillance. You don't go to level four according to this plan until you have a case, for example, a person in Marion County that had COVID-19.
An active case.
But we don't have one yet. Not, not that it's not, we don't know if it's here. Okay? So we should be in level three right now until level four. But again, I'm not going to read this to you, I just want you to look on page five. And here's the mitigation and prevention piece, and then it's assigned to a particular person who's responsible for that. Now, no one wanted to jump up and say, oh, give me that, I want responsibility for that. So a lot of this is committee decisions, but at the end of the day, Kevin will communicate the things out. But you'll see Department of Health in there, you'll see EOC, you'll see board toward the end, but you'll see, I'm just going to kind of walk you through the document. Level one is mitigation and prevention. It's kind of what you do before, which is what we've been doing three weeks ago. If you turn to page six, you'll see it again, these are just who is responsible for doing what, just the assignment duties. Page seven is similar to the other two, it's just 21, so there's a lot of things that have, have to happen before. And you'll notice you see committee there a lot. The committee will come and make those decisions, not one person in a silo making those decisions. Level two is advanced precautions, and remember, we're following that hierarchical triangle, the pyramid that's given to us by the Department of Health. So we didn't make these terms or coin these terms, they're already given to us. So level two is advanced precautions, and you'll see CDC, and we defined what CDC stood for in Department of Health, you'll see that. And here's where we are, we're on page nine, and we're actually on level three. So this is what we should be doing, kind of paying attention to what's happening, there's no school closures, there's just a heightened awareness, and we're talking about it. So this is where we currently are as a district, and then we got the phone call Friday. Circumvented our whole plan, this is what we're doing now. We didn't have a choice to make a school closure, come to the board and say, what do you think? It was told to us, so that's the example I want to give. The asterisk says, if someone else jumps in, we're out, and we're kind of following their guidance at this point. So these, again, this is a plan. So the only thing we're going to do now is take guidance from the Department of Health, take guidance from the CDC, take guidance from whomever gives us this. The biggest thing we're going to have to do is follow what they say until the very last page is on page 13, that's recovery. After this is over, then we got to come through, and that will be a time we come through as a board and as a district and say, okay, now this has passed, now what do we do? We probably won't get a ton of guidance, because though we say, we did our part, we're out, so probably we'll pick back up again. There'll be a lot of conversations of, how do we clean the buildings? When do we let them come? What's the appropriate thing to do? But again, this is a planning document, a pandemic, a pandemic action plan that is presented, it's, so it is for you to look at, and if you want to, Reverend Cummings, if you want to say the next meeting, we can have it on the books, but not to make light of the situation, but we're not following it right this second, because we're following the guidance of other folks right now. But this is, in the future, we do need to have a plan, and this is, and I want to tell you, this has probably been 50 hours of all these people just working on this to get it, what if this happens? And Reverend Cummings, and we were talking this morning, there's a lot of what ifs, we can't predict, and, you know, we were at 2:50, what, this morning, then we went to 50, now we're at 10, and that was a day, was it that quick? It was, went from 2:50 to 10 in a day? So who knows what the future holds? But this is a pandemic action plan for our district that we would like to get board approval whenever you would like to do it, but it is not pressing that we get it done, because we are at the point now where we're following the Department of Health and what their, their suggestions are.
Well, I think it's important too to note that even though we're on the level four and under the guidance of CDC, that the recommendations in here are still pertinent, and they are aligned to what Department of Health has been doing. So we are on the right, right track, it's just we're not making the major decisions, we're following that.
So the superintendent mentioned Andrea Simmons before, she's our Department of Health contact, she goes to those meetings, she brings the information back, we follow the CDC recommendations, we do what they say. So for example, the CDC recommends, that is a recommendation, there's not been a mandate on a whole lot of things yet, there's not been a whole lot of definitive, this is what you have to do, just a lot of recommendations. That's kind of where I can foresee there coming, some very specific things that we're going to be required to do as we move forward, but as of right now, it's just recommendations from DOH and CDC.
Dr. Grantham?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad that you mentioned Andrea Simmons, because there's a couple of things that I have on my mind. The first one, there's a 12-person committee, and it is amazing the work that you've already put in as, as a whole committee to, to come up with strategic ways to, to help keep us safe and help us recover and help prevent. And then, as I think about Andrea specifically, I was looking through, and in addition to all the committee responsibilities, that, I think I counted seven other responsibilities that she has. She's only one person, I understand she's on 24-hour call, whether she's on vacation or not. Would this be a time to look at providing some support for her, because no one?
Next board meeting?
Yeah, I think it's on the books for the very next board meeting for that.
Well, how about that? Okay.
We have to.
Yeah, it's just too much for one person, certainly in a crisis like this, and you can tell that as the days goes by, it's wearing on all of us, but certainly her, because every field trip calls her, every health concern goes to her, every community member, because we don't know that, like, we didn't know the math she does. I didn't know that till Preston just said that, but she's aware of that.
If she ever gets to go on a cruise again, it would be nice for her not to have to answer the phone.
Correct.
And thank you for recognizing her hard work, that means a lot, so please consider that for March 24th.
So Reverend Cummings, that's your, whatever you want to do with this, whenever you want to approve it, I just don't like giving to you, say, approve it now, but here is the pandemic action plan that has been reviewed and reviewed and reviewed by several people, so that is for your.
I think, I think the public need to know that we do have a plan in place.
Yes, sir.
That has been updated. They also need to know that some of the decisions that have been happening have been not just because of us having a knee-jerk reaction, but it's out of our hands at this point.
Sir.
Because we, we're, we were at a different level than what the Health Department and the state is at right now. They're beyond where we would have been, just with, working within ourselves, so thank you. Board members, discussion about this, because at some point?
I think we need to put it on as soon as we can. I think it says a lot to the public that we have a plan in place. They've been working on it. It was approved before when it was a plan for H1N1. So I would like for us to show that vote of confidence and go ahead and get it on the agenda.
I thought she said it was.
No.
That was Ms. Simmons's assistant.
That was from Ms. Andrea Simmons to have some help with.
So we couldn't vote on this today, even if we wanted to?
I would not recommend, I want you to read it first, and it's a draft, and I don't want to put, right, and then come to us and say, hey, change this, or, you know, that's why it's a marked draft.
Wouldn't be holding up anything by not.
No, we're going to continue, because this is already, this is up, we're just up, we're, we're working, we're in the middle of it.
What you would be approving, whenever we put it on, is the updates. The plan has already been in place.
So it'd just be the updates?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. I do want to say, this is not COVID-19, this is a pand, so we kept throwing that term, this is for any pandemic that ever comes our way, this is the plan for the district.
Right.
For anything that might be called a pandemic.
Right.
Well, we hope, right.
And the last one was from 2005, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're 20, so.
It was way outdated, the names on there.
Might be good to review it.
Yeah.
That's one.
Yeah, right. Might need to come about more than just every 15 years.
So I'm, I'm going to ask the board members, you guys, let's kind of review it, so we can get it on, get, come to some point where we can come to a consensus on this and get it moved forward.
I mean, I feel like if, if, if these highly respected people have gone through it with a fine-tooth comb, who am I? I'm just, if I believe that the experts have looked at it.
Almost daily for three weeks, almost daily.
I'm ready to put it on and vote on it as soon as we can.
Would we be able to do an item for cause?
Absolutely, I think this is a good item for cause.
So you want to do it for the board meeting for next week? Ms. King?
Get done. That's fine, I'm fine.
All right, so for the record, we're going to put it on for our item for cause for next week's board, board meeting.
Reverend Cummings, let me draw your attention to two more things. Ms. Mayweather came representing MESP, we've had conversation with all three union groups, IUPAT, MESP, and MEA. We are not in a position, never will we be, to take people's paychecks, they will get paid, so kind of the conversation has been such as, if you get paid for four days now, when all this is over, you owe us four days. That's kind of how the conversation's been going. Every union person has been okay with that, with the exception, if the governor waives four days, then it's no harm, no foul. But we are not, certainly now, and we, the, a specific example, is someone that had to take off this week, maybe, and then they had to take off next week, so therefore they haven't gotten a paycheck for two weeks. We are not in a position of doing that, we are going to continue the payroll cycle just as it would normally go, and then after all this kind of sorts itself out, we'll figure it out at the end. So all three unions have talked about that. Those same people on that list are looking at an email now, they were trying to get it ready to send to the community, to the employer, the employees first, but we can't be so specific, because we got 220 and 240 and 260, and IPCs, and we, so we're trying to get a message that Kevin's going to send out before lunch tomorrow, so that our employees can kind of say, hey, we're going to be taken care of, because I know y'all have been getting emails, but we've been getting them, you know, are we getting paid, are we losing money, that kind of stuff. So we want to put our employees at ease. And then, and then followed by the parents in the community with food, that was the next conversation. So I will ask these ladies to come if you would like, but the people that are Susan Johnson with our nutrition program, you got Teresa, who's, y'all know who Teresa's our money person, and then you got Becky, Becky Warren in charge of our buses. So they've been working since nine this morning, they have a plan to deliver food, and initially it was going to be on Monday, but we were told today it has to be when students aren't, they were not scheduled to be here on Monday anyway. So kind of the federal government will pay us from Tuesday on, not for Monday. So Ms. King, you asked me, what would that cost? I asked Ms. Boston Ellis, if we paid for Monday, if we paid for Monday, it's $221,000 that comes out of us. But there was never a plan, because the kids are not supposed to be home on Monday anyway. We'll do whatever your direction is, but that was the, I didn't think it'd be.
We never feed them during spring break, do we?
No, no, we don't feed them spring break or the following Monday, because they are already supposed to be out. They were not supposed to be, come back, the kids are not supposed to come to school on Tuesday.
When does the food start?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. We will start feeding students.
I thought y'all were talking about.
Tuesday, but you did ask that question, it's $221,000. If we cover the bill for Monday, if we do not, then that's just part of the federal assistance. So that's, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
So I've had a call from Interfaith, and they are very willing to do the backpack programs, however, they have no way of getting the backpack programs to our kids. But one of my thoughts is, is that if, if we can count on Interfaith, and then maybe some of our community churches would be sites where families could pick up backpacks if they need extra food. So that might be something, Reverend Cummings, that we want to look at for those weekends and things. So Interfaith is very ready to continue with backpacks, they just don't have a way of getting them to the kids. But if we can get churches involved in this, because there's churches everywhere, maybe we can at least have sites.
Preston?
If, if you can get me a schedule of what you're, where you're, the targeted areas that you're trying to get, I could probably get my citizens' emergency response team volunteers.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Is to be able to get some of my volunteers in the sheriff's office, you know, if you can kind of give me, you know, what type, you know, what type of vehicle we need to be able to get them moved, and then how many sites, and on what days, if you can get that to me sooner than later, then I can work up some volunteers and figure out.
That might be a great idea. So how about you and Carla and I have a conversation, and then we can get Reverend Cummings, because I really think the churches might be, although some of them are closed, but some of their offices are still open, it might be a good location place. I'm, you know, I'm thinking of Silver Springs Shore's Assembly of God and what Pastor Delkamp does, a distribution site. So let's, let's think about that for the backpack program, okay?
When will this be for, you think?
It will have to be for starting, if, if we're going to get community assistance as far as the food, have to start Monday, right?
Well, anytime. Yeah, yeah, so I'll, I'll have a conversation with Carla tomorrow, and then maybe we can round up some churches.
Suzanne, how do, how do we work this, if both of us are in it, at that?
She can do it, and you want to be in the meeting too?
And I'm hoping, I'm hoping.
About the sunshine?
That the sunshine law is.
That we're asking, that was going to be one of the things.
We're working on that, I'm already having discussions with the state and also with the governor, is, and it's on his legal team's desk on trying to figure out how he wants to address, to try to suspend it to anything that's related to the COVID-19.
And Florida School Board Association, I was on that call this morning, and they're trying to do the same thing. So there may be some leeway and sunshine to all of this.
But if, but if we started, so you're thinking next week, though?
Starting Monday.
Monday.
If we can get it done that, that quickly.
Can we, can we, we can advertise it now, just in case?
Okay, so let's do that.
Nicole, let's, let's just, if we can advertise it, that, my caller and myself will both be there. Just put all of us on there.
Just say all, just.
Just put all of us, yeah.
So we'll try to, so we'll try to get together, so, so, so a meeting on Monday, is that what we're saying?
We probably need to meet this week.
Yeah, I need, let me get with Carla.
For emergency meetings, you only have to have, what, 48 hours or something?[1706.33] For emergency meetings, you only have to have, what, 48 hours or something?
Let me see if she's, she's probably watching.
Can you just list a meeting for every day just in case something happens? And then that way it's advertised and if it happens.
I mean, can we not do that? Because it may be that we have to meet on a everyday basis.
Until there's some direction from the governor's office that you probably should.
So, let's, just, just take the safest route.
Yeah.
Advertise them. Just advertise them for a week straight and hopefully by that time, we'll get the clearance from the governor's office and once that comes out, we can suspend doing the advertising on the other ones.
So, Ms. Green, could you get wording? If you'll send it to me because Ms. Prestapino is going on vacation and I'll work with Kevin. He's in Tennessee, but he'll get it updated on the website.
That's, I think that's the safest and best way. We don't want any type of ethics violation.
Will we be able to this week get into this building or do we need to, you know what? Main Street Bank has offered their conference room, Ms. Clifton, for any meetings that we need. So, we can, we can do that too. So, I can check with Angie. She may be out there.
The O.C. is also open too.
Okay. Alright. So, I will get with Carla and then hopefully maybe if not tomorrow, then Wednesday, we can at least have a meeting to start planning this. Okay?
And if you're doing churches, maybe you could get things together so Sunday could be some kind of pickup.
Distribution.
Yeah.
And a lot of churches are closed, but, but that's a great idea. Okay.
Not Newsline Missionary Baptist Church.
Any, is there perishable foods or anything? So, even, because one of the concerns I'm going to have, especially with my volunteers because of their age groups, is, you know, they're not going to be a lot of groups of people when we're dropping this off, you know, to where.
No, it'll be, it would be at a church and our backpack program has nothing perishable in it and Carla does the food for kids program. So, and then if we can use the churches, that would be great.
Will we be able to try to hit, take care of most of the county with this?
Well, what I'd like to know, Dr. Mayor, is where are most vulnerable areas that really need, I know you have that. So, that's where we really need to look at providing these backpacks for these kids. Okay.
Okay. Can you get that to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, let me, and if you want me to bring Susan, I can, I'll tell you what they did. So, beginning Tuesday, we have drop off. So, a bus driver is going to drive a, a support person, a food nutritionist person that works, she, they're going to hand bag lunches. They're going to open the bus door. They're going to hand lunches to people like a drive-through and they're going to shut the door and then we'll go to the next stop.
They're going to do the regular bus route?
No, no, no. We, so they have a, they've spent all day trying to say, okay, come to this. So, for example, there's a stop, there's a stop in Lake Weir, the community center that they're going to stop at. That's not a school. But now, here we go. Now, we got more than 10, so that's going to be a different, because that changed on us this morning. So, they've been working, trying to figure it out. So, we have people coming in Monday that are going to start getting things ready. Tuesday, we'll start delivering food to chosen sites. A bus driver will drive them. One of our other employees will hand it out and then we'll go to the next stop. And it's just bag lunches. So, Ms. King, you asked a question. What about a child when they come? I don't know how we get reimbursed. Well, I do know how we get reimbursed. They have to be one of ours and 18 or less and we know the rules to that. So, that's a good question that, again, I, I have a problem not getting a two-year-old food, but.
But I doubt everybody's going to get their lunch anyway. I mean, you're going to.
Right, right.
Certain number of them. You're going to have a lot of them that just aren't going to get them and just be in with the numbers.
Right. But we want to make sure that the service is out there for those that are really, really in need of this. From day one, Friday afternoon, that was the first question that hit, hit my phone. And then because Marion County is such a large county and has some extensively remote areas that go all the way to Lake County and Sumter County, if I'm not mistaken, and Putnam County. So, we got the.
I wonder how those people are even, I don't know how they're going to, some of those families are going to get even to the hubs.
Right. That, some of the, some of the conversations today were, we can't take it to every house. So, we tried to do as best we could now. I can give you the specifics. I can then have, bring the specifics, but I think it just changed on us when we got the, the next 10. I think it just changed very quickly before the board meeting. I just trust Susan and Teresa and Becky immensely. So, our game plan was to send something out to families by tomorrow night. Hey, here's the plan of what we're going to do. If you would like for them to send you the specific stops, like as they do that, if y'all want to do the minutia of that, I'll certainly have that sent to you. And if you hear something that, hey, this place hasn't been, we can, we can add that.
So, because what's going to happen is they're going to hit us and say, our kids didn't get any in this neighborhood and we're going to have to be able to kind of.
Right.
Coordinate back to.
So, what I'd ask you to do is if you don't, if, if you do get a constituent calling you and they're not getting, just let, let one of us know and we'll, we'll take care of it some kind of way. It's just a lot of specifics going on.
I always wonder if, just because these students are on a routine already, so in the morning, say they catch their bus at 7:19. If there was a way, wherever it is close to there, if the, if they could just go to the regular stop at that time, then they know their time, they know the schedule, and then there's not like be here at 11:30 and they're not used to, you know what I mean?
So, you're suggesting make the bus run and just hand off at the bus stop?
That's what I always wonder.
And I initially thought that and we talked about that a little bit this morning, but how is that going to play with the new update with the 10?
Well, in the fact that we may, we won't have all our bus drivers working because some of them can't because they don't have childcare. So, we won't have a full, our full staff of bus drivers either.
Yeah. So, we'll have several bus drivers that don't report because they have to watch their children too and things such as that.
So, as, as uncomfortable as it might seem right now not to have a solid plan, if we can come to consensus on a plan for the first couple of days, because we know things are going to change, we are fluid enough to change that plan. So, we, we just need to have something ready to go Monday, Tuesday for these kids.
And I think Ms. Aurora, you know, she knows these places and the best we can do is make a plan right now. Try to drop off at the community center. If we're hearing that our kids aren't able to get there, then we can make another plan. But I, but we can't, we got to get started and we have to have somewhere to start and I think this is a good place to start.
Well, the, when Dr. Dawson was in here, she kind of helped us with that.
Yeah.
Because that can eliminate the city of Ocala spots.
Yeah.
By utilizing.
The Ocala.
Housing Authority and hitting those, those community centers, especially like in the area. She's still out there?
She's waiting for me.
Okay. So, then that kind of helps take care. So, then we can focus on those outer layer, outer layering areas such as the, the forest areas and the Romeos and stuff like that.
And I do want to say this. We, we have a four-day plan for next week. We haven't predicted for six weeks or eight weeks. So, we have a plan in place for the next four days when we come back. And then after that, we'll be right back here having a.
Another conversation.
Different conversation. So, right. We're just trying to get through the next two weeks because we know by Wednesday or Thursday, something else will be thrown at us.
Some of these kids are so remote, we're just not going to be able to, if we don't do like Kelly suggested and have a bus running, unless we run the buses only to those real remote areas and use the bus drivers for that.
Maybe this is where our community folks can come in.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. Maybe, maybe this is where Preston, where, with the backpacks and.
Right.
We can help out with.
And also, you know, think about some of those rural areas, you know, out there, you know.
Alt Valley and all the way out there.
You know, is maybe utilize and talk on what Chief Fanna, just use a fire station to where, you know, those can be dropped off there. Then you're not working.
Oh, that's a great idea.
That is a great idea.
Not working a specific time to where telling people you have to be there at a certain time because that's where they're going to be handing off.
That's a great idea.
Is, you know, you get out there, you know, out there on 42 and.
Right.
The fire station out there, you know, the same thing with Fort McCoy, you know, you.
That's a great idea.
And there's probably some mama on the street that can just pick them up.
Everybody's. And those areas, I mean, and you start looking at, you know, West 40 out there, you know, 140th, you know, you got a lot of.
That's a long way out.
Low-income, you know, migrant workers and families with kids and stuff out there to where, you know, at least throughout the day, they may find some time to be able to get.
To the fire station.
To that fire station.
That's a great idea.
Could we do that? We just do that?
Is that a, is that a plan that we can use to, with the fire department?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I think for those very far outer layering areas, we probably do need to use the fire departments because there should be a fire department within close proximity.
Sir, I'm going to ask Susan and Teresa, all they'll do is work on a specific plan tomorrow to get us through those four days after we return from spring break. Again, if y'all hear anything of a family not getting food, please email us and we'll take care of it and make it happen.
And maybe with, with this announcement that you guys are going to put out, that if there is a family that's not getting served, maybe they can hit, call us or something, contact.
Yeah, we'll put something on it too. And remember, that committee's going to approve the whole email that Kevin sends out tomorrow night and the, and the phone call and all that kind of stuff. So, Ms. Thoreau.
Yes, I was just going to say, we've all been thinking a lot about this and so many community folks have been offering it. And I think it makes people feel better to do something, you know?
Right, sure.
Rondo comes to mind and, and of course, United Way is, is totally all in. So, if we can, and, and remembering too that the food is going to be non-perishable. So, if it has to go to a fire station and sit for a few hours, it's not like it's going to go bad.
What kind of food is it going to be?
But they'll tell us, they'll tell us.
Hurricane food like we have.
They'll tell us.
Bag lunches.
Yeah, but like.
They'll tell us when they come in.
Yeah, those good peanut butter and jelly jam which is. They're really good.
You were there, Ms. Thoreau, or.
All prepackaged.
At Laker High School and they brought out that day and they had the little crustable, uncrustables and all that kind of stuff.
Ms. Thoreau, I think you're on a great idea. Maybe if we can take care of like a breakfast, lunch, non-perishable bag, maybe community can step in for dinners, hot dinners or something like that.
I would just ask Ms. McCall, if you, if we can work on Monday.
Yep.
And let the district show up Tuesday. That would help us a lot. If we can just really focus on that first day, then let's pick up after.
And Monday should give you kind of an idea of.
Of where we got to go.
Or in the need or making that request.
Right.
Sir, do you want Ms. Boston Ellis to come in to answer questions? Do you want us to put a plan together? What would you like?
You have to remember too that these families may not be working.
Right.
Their, their place of business may also be closing.
Absolutely. But to spend gas to go pick up something that's that inexpensive, I mean, they may not be able to just pick something at home to start with. I mean, if it's only, like, if it's only a dollar and 20 cents. I have never, ever seen that face. I'm not sure how to read that.
Good afternoon. We were sort of jumping up and down because as Dr. Grantham stated, we got together at nine o'clock this morning. Actually, I told them Friday that we needed to do some things and get them ready as soon as possible. And as I told Dr. Grantham, I have a new appreciation of transportation because our objective was to get food to the most populated areas. And I was amazed at the number of homes and mobile homes that are just at the far reaches of our community. And then I was excited when Mrs. Dawkins came up and started talking about those particular sites. They have already planned this out. And I would, I would so much like for you to hear their plan before you do anything else. Not that we were discounting the community in any way, but I, I want you to know what your staff has done this morning and they've done an excellent job. That's why I was looking like that.
It makes people.
Hey, Ms. Johnson.
Good afternoon.
How are you doing?
Hello.
We have worked very hard to make certain that we hit the important, the kids of critical need in our district. With Marion County being the fourth largest district in the state of Florida landwise, I think we've done an excellent job to hit some of our hotspots. Our plan is to serve lunch and a snack. At the same time, we will give both meals to the child. We will be targeting children 18 and under. Okay? 18 and under.
Good.
So, any questions?
No, thank you. Yeah, that feels a lot better. That feels a lot better.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. Don't start my morning over. It's been a little tedious. So, in an effort to do so, we have a combination of things that's going on. So, Ms. Susan Johnson and her team will have set school site locations as well as the neighborhood, Dear Run, Pavilion Oaks and all those places that was mentioned earlier this afternoon. We have them already identified. Her staff would be stationed there. So, I'm closing the gap and going into the neighborhoods. And just to give you an example of a few, Ocala Ridge is on Highway 40 West and 60th. So, I will go through there at three different stop locations, which are bus stop locations. So, every stop location that we're making will be either a bus stop location or a park within the community or a community service center such as Marion Oaks. You're familiar with that. So, their community center is a stop on our route. Another location of great concern is beside Marion Oaks. It just left me. Chatmire. No, not Chatmire. That was in Dunellen.
What about East Marion and?
Yes, we're going to hit that too. So, until that, we'll come back to me. So, Chatmire, we're going to go in there as well and we have the Boys and Girls Club in that area.
Yes.
So, when we hit the shores, we'll be hitting places like that near the Boys and Girls Club, near the park where the children play. Lily and Bryant Center, which is behind Howard encompasses Happiness Homes, the little area next to 16th Avenue and all of those areas in there.
Chris.
Absolutely. So, when we go out into the East Marion area, we have several stops along there, pack and sack. We'll go around Lake Kerr, which is way out 19. We have identified areas out there as well. Anthony, I mean, we.
I was going to say North, like Reddick, North.
Yes, we've started, excuse me?
What about Busby Quarters and Buzz.
Busby Quarter is encompassed with Lily and Bryant. That's all, that little circle. Lily and Bryant sits in the center of three to four neighborhoods. So, if we go down that street off of MLK and end up at Lily and Bryant, we've touched everybody in that area. As we get into the north end of the county and the east, that's kind of spread out. And so, what we did was hit 183rd Avenue Road that goes south of 40 East and targeted some of those pocketed areas throughout there. We've gone as far north as I said, 19, trying to think of something in Reddick. Ocala Park Estates. We're going to drive through there and some of the.
Citra area out, Citra and all that stuff.
Because there's a community center in, in Citra, that little community center and Buzzeroos too.
Okay. Lakes and Meadows, we hit that one as well.
But let me jot this down real quick. What was that community center?
Citra.
In Citra. Okay.
And, and also Buzzeroos and Reddick.
I think we have Buzzeroos on there, but I'll double check. So, what I've done is when I pull up my map, when I pull it up by schools, we touch on every community because we're transporting these children. And I can see where, even when you hit on Ward Hollis, you can see the walkout. So, we have a lot of walkout around the different schools, but we have ballparks there. We have a, you know, a, a good target area that I can zoom in and see where we can park a bus. So, we've tried to identify as much as we possibly could throughout Marion County. So, once we present the plan to you and you look through it and you see something that we can have a bus run out and then come back to, I just need to make sure that all sites are identified with the time that we're expected to be there, that I can get to Ms. Susan Johnson because when she writes this plan, all of the information must be in her plan for that reimbursement.
Right.
What an incredible job you guys have done.
They've been, they've been, they've been on it since early, early this morning, so.
I would like to say one other thing. That state of Florida, once we do our application to them for reimbursement, they will actually list all of our locations on their 911 or 311 or 411 information site. So, if a family goes in to put in their address and their zip code, it will automatically show what location they can get a meal and what time that meal will be served.
That's very awesome.
Quick question before y'all go. What's, what's the time of the day? Are we trying to do these?
We're going to start probably at 9:30 and because we have multiple locations, we'll have bus going from 9:30 to 9:45 at one location. That same bus will proceed to the next stop and sit there.
And then one more thought and it's our homeless population, which is way too large for, that we just don't like that. But the motels there along Silver Springs Boulevard, they, they move around a lot. We don't know where they are. Is there, what's our plan for our homeless?
We have not, we didn't. That's a good point. What we need to do is to look at what we can do to serve that location, those locations along 441.
So, if the master. If they are living at, we know that because I've seen them stop at certain little motels there. Is there some type of way that we can kind of touch base with those motels and find if they could, there's a drop off?
We can. We will.
And Mr. Ellers, we'll get Mr. Ellers, Mr. Butler, Ms. Knight and, and connect them directly with you because I know they were working on how to take care of those kids, but let's combine those efforts.
Right.
Great.
Thank you.
Ladies, ladies, thank y'all.
That's amazing.
Thank y'all.
That's amazing, ladies.
Sir, you're okay. I'm going to have them get the specifics to you as board members, if you're okay with that. Again, if you hear something and we're missing something, let us know and we'll cover that. Remember, our plan is for four days right now and if it goes beyond, we'll have to do more than that. So, again, tomorrow morning before lunch, we're going to send something to employees that says you're going to still get paid. And we're trying to send something to community members, to our parents by tomorrow night. Maybe not the specifics yet, just to say, hey, there is a plan coming and we'll send that to you later. Is that okay from each of you? Is that over?
Oh, with, with, since they do have a, a great plan in place, do we need to do anything, Ms. McCall, as far as still coordinating with, for stops and stuff other than for Monday, other than for Monday?
Sent Carla and I'm going to pull Scott Quintel in. I've sent them a text to see if they can meet at one o'clock tomorrow. Preston, can you meet at one o'clock tomorrow? Okay. So, to talk about those days that we're not serving kids.
Because we were talking about doing Monday.
You know, yeah. So, that's, so that's what I'm going to try to do. At least maybe we can get some backpacks packed and dropped off at fire stations or something for those that really need them. So, we'll, so we'll work on that. I don't know that we can get anything posted for tomorrow, but I'll go ahead and I'll report out. Suzanne, if you can just send a message after our meeting tomorrow and see where we are. Okay? You're okay with that?
Yes.
Because it's going to take a while for Carla to get, I mean, she's already got volunteers that pack those backpacks on a regular basis.
Right.
So, I don't think that's going to be a problem. What the problem may be, and I don't know, and this is why we need to meet, is the kids usually bring those backpacks back to school.
Right.
So, it's getting them back. But is there another way, you know, that we can do it? So, so let us meet. We'll figure that out. Scott? Scott Quintel may have some great ideas too, so I'll pull him in on that as well.
I always wonder if you could ask Public Sir Wind Dixie for paper bags?
Well, yeah, so I, yeah.
Or just the paper?
Yes.
Because I'm full of, I mean, it's-
Is it?
So we'll, so let us meet tomorrow and kinda come up with a plan. And then I'll get back with everybody. I'll get back with everybody through you.
So you'll let me know?
Attorney Green wants to speak. Okay, let me, okay.
I agree.
Get it done.
Do you still want me to do general language for a meeting advertisement towards the end of this week for all, everyone here?
Two-thirty.
In case Ms. McCall wants to report back on that?
I do.
Because-
I don't wanna have to go through, trying to wait. If we just go ahead and do it now, we're covered.
So you wanted-
Just do the blanket one that-
But I gotta, you gotta give me a date and time. I mean, we can do it like every, notice one for every seventy-two hours if you want for the next, until the schools open again.
Board.
Or just do it for every day? Just, we don't know when we're gonna get called out.
That's what I'm thinking, every day.
What would be the best time?
It could be every twenty-four hours?
Here, there could be a potential emergency meeting here.
So put it as a potential meeting here every day at, give me a time, guys.
I mean, we hasn't hit Marion County yet, but we don't know what's gonna happen.
We wouldn't wanna meet in the middle of the day because then by the end of the day, three things will have changed.
Let's say four o'clock.
What do you think, Heidi?
Because we were for emergency operations, we met at five, remember? So four-thirty or five? Isn't that what we did a lot during the hurricane? It was late, well, there was an early morning meeting in eight AM and four or five P.
So let's say five o'clock every day.
Five o'clock.
Okay.
That's for me.
Beginning.
Are you guys good with that?
Thursday?
Okay.
Beginning.
Beginning Wednesday.
Sheriff Cummings.
So as needed though, if we don't need to-
If we don't need it, we won't, we can, if we don't need it, we can have Suzanne, just the attorney, send out something saying not needed. No meeting today.
Should we say four-thirty so staff doesn't have to hang around past five o'clock?
They're not here, it's spring break, most of that.
Well, I'm thinking for next week though.
Oh, next week.
Next week they'll be back to work.
We'll be working.
I know it, but not at five o'clock. That's why I'm saying should we do it at four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty.
That way, you know, that last little bit, if we need staff or something, they'll still be around it. We'll have to wait overtime.
And here's another thought. We're talking about feeding kids up to eighteen years old, but students with disabilities are with us till twenty-two.
Well, Dr. Robby's had a meeting with E S E today and we have to follow that. If they're twenty-two and E S E, they still get there.
They'll still be included.
That's all part of, we didn't say that, but that's a good thought. Yes, ma'am. If you're still receiving services, you'll still get food.
That's pretty much receiving services and some that may not will be counted.
Right.
And we have a code to cover all this for, knowing this is a COVID-nineteen code, so for accountability issues.
Sheriff Cummings, our employees have been taken care of and will continue to be. Our parents have been, our community, and most importantly, our students have been. And again, the plan is until the end of next Friday, and then we'll probably back to you saying this is what the plan is. Again, but I will tell you, as board members, if you get a phone call that says, hey, I heard we're not getting paid, that's not the stance of this district. That's not what we're about. So if you hear that, say, that's not true.
Guys have helped us to kinda clear up some issues, some pertinent issues that were out there. We just wanna make sure that everybody knows that we're on this, we're not sleeping on this, we are.
Is there anything else you want us to do? Is there anything, we need to use your guidance? Is there anything else we wanna, that you wanna put us pointed at or focused on or?
And especially, I think it needs to be made note to the public too, that the school board is on call to meet every day if we need to. So that the public knows we're not just like kinda waiting for the governor, that we are on call for them, for our, for our students, every single day if need be.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna ask again, just the communication piece, very, very important. There have been a lot of uncertainty and questions. And I'm grateful that we did have this meeting today because that way we are less, Mr. Bullen teaches us the one message, one voice thing. So that's good. Maybe we could do a better job with communicating because there is so much uncertainty, especially among like our administrators or our teachers. Like we even get emails like, do we go in next week? Who is it that goes in next week? So if we can spell that out, again, I think we, I've noticed on other counties and websites, they've done a very good job. And they're like, if you're this, you come in here, you know? Next Monday's a paid holiday, but Tuesday through Friday. If we can dispel everything out so that there isn't so much uncertainty, I know our community, our, our community, our staff and our employees appreciate that.
Ms. King, we'll be very generic, but we'll point it back to the district website that says if you're two-sixty, this is what you do. If you're two-forty, this is what you do, if you're this.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just spell it out.
In a voicemail for someone to hear or read, so we'll do that.
Right, if they can just click on it and read it. Because that just makes-
It'll be up in the top, so.
Right, it's simplified and everybody knows what it is. Because right now, there's rumors, like crazy, crazy rumors. And also because I was asked, can we squash this? I have been asked, because teachers are under the assumption, they've been told that they're gonna be the ones cleaning their classrooms.
So, so just a good rule of thumb, no one will ask an employee to do anything that's not in their job description. And that's not cleaning buses and cleaning toilets, it's not of a job description of hardly anybody. So that's not gonna be it.
Let me kinda address that. I think when all this happened, we were just trying to think of ways to get our folk paid and making sure that everybody was taken care of. Those, that's the spell. We will not violate any union contract. And if it's not in their job description, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make them do it.
Right, I just had to clear that up.
Yes, ma'am, that's, you're right.
The rumors are rampant.
Right, yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.
And I think too, that reaching out directly helped a lot. And I wanna thank you, Reverend Cummings, for every time you got one, you would pick up the phone and call me. And if we, we look at the clock now, it's ten till six on Monday. If we reflect back, we had the conference call with the governor and the commissioner four o'clock on Friday. And at that exact moment, everybody spun up to try to take care of our folks. And Mr. Altobello was in the mix with helping with, with what to do with our folks. So we couldn't make a decision until he talked to Mr. Avery, Ms. Merriweather. They all chatted with you. So I think timeliness, we're doing very good, very good. And I'm proud of all of you and what you did all weekend.
I am proud of you, but I have seen what other districts have done and they are on it and there's not the confusion. It is, again, spelled out. And I appreciate us moving forward and having that consistency and being very transparent to our community and staff members. Thank you.
Be very detailed, yes, ma'am.
Communication, it's all about communication, picking up the phone.
So, listen, first I wanna tell you guys, thank you for heeding the call to come out so quickly and get this. It shows where your heart is, it's on making sure that our people, our kids are taken care of. We are, this thing is gonna be fluid until we get a hand on it. And I'm grateful to Dr. Mary, to all of you, and to Preston and Mr. Landers. Mr. Landers has given us some great information on what we need to do and trying to stay abreast of this. And then I do wanna thank that team of those ladies, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Boston Ellis and Ms. Roar, because I know that they were on this early this morning. I think I was, I think I woke Ms. Boston Ellis up Saturday morning, calling her for questions and stuff. And Dr. Mary, we've been early in the morning, so this thing has been evolving. I wanna say mutating, is what it is. That's what it has been mutating. And it's changing every few minutes, so we just have to be ready to do whatever happens.
The good thing too is that with this break in time like this, any virus or anything that should, would, would have been alive in the schools should be dead.
We're hoping.
Because it only can stay alive a certain amount of time. It's got a lifeline.
We're hoping. And now there's some parents out there that are concerned about cancellations of extracurricular activities and all those types of things. We had to go get some kids, we had to do some things like that. Those recommendations came down from the state. And we were following those state recommendations. So just know that your kids' safety and their health and the staff's safety and health is of the utmost importance to us, more so than anything else.
And I think those phone messages that y'all do, do such a good job with getting the messages out and everything. Because if one parent misses it, the neighbor, somebody, Aunt Sally or somebody, did you get that call? No, I didn't get it, you know, this, kinda they, I think they're very helpful.
Right, I'll let Kevin know, thank you.
Yes, so guys, if any, Ms. McCall?
No, I just, you know, the community's been great. I had a call from Senior Services this morning, Ms. Martinez. Some of her transit drivers are elderly and have compromised health issues. So talk to Ms. Roar, some of our bus drivers that aren't working, maybe haven't, you know, yes. And also some other places that might be running some kids' camps. And so there may be some opportunity for some parents and some teachers to add a little extra work. So stay tuned, because I'm getting a lot of those calls.
That's a great idea, Ms. McCall.
Well, they're calling me, that's what I'm saying, the community's-
That's your good information together, that's real good.
So, so I'm thrilled that maybe we'll, and Main Street Bank did call. She offered to be a distribution center at her drive-through window. So that is available to us. I don't know that we can do that, but if we get down to a point where we need something like that, we may be able to get other banks involved and stuff like that. So it's pretty cool, the community stepping up.
Let me back, go back. Dr. Mary, anything you wanna say before we go ahead?
We need to discuss the March twenty-fourth board meeting.
Indeed.
And how we would like to handle that. I talked briefly with Ms. Green, talked with you prior. We're gonna pass those out. Here's the agenda that was published for March twenty-fourth. And as, thank you, Ms. Green, as it makes its way around, my suggestions are at the top. I suggest, because this one is heavy too with a lot of students. So if we look at the agenda for, we revised inspiration and pledge. Instead of having a student come, one of you can do inspiration and pledge. Then we postpone the recognitions under five and six. Because those are a lot of kids and it would be a very full house. Then seven, I'm going to ask that we do move forward with seven, which is Mr. McGowan's data presentation. I think that's essential, especially in this uncertain time, that you all know, that the community knows where we are at with our data before all of this starts. I think that's essential. Then Ms. Green's going to address eight, which is public comment. Nine and ten, public hearings where you'll have people coming in potentially to speak. When we move then on, we have consent items, so all of that, discussion items. We would need somebody here for that, that would just be one or two people. Of course, we would move through donations, board comments, regular, student discipline, regular, then address off-air if needed. So the only main points of concern in my mind would be how to handle eight, nine and ten. Then moving forward again with seven, it's easy to postpone five and six because the kids, you know, aren't in school anyway.
I mean, seeing that, seeing that the number of people that should be in the room has changed, I think we probably do need to cancel the recognitions if you guys are in agreement, consensus with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so taking off five, six, and then-
Clarification on that? Are we moving the recommendations to the next meeting? Or should I reject the items back to the owner so they can put them back on at a later date? That is convenient to families and recognitionees.
I would say to reject it because we don't know when it's gonna come back. We don't know when we're gonna get clear for all of that.
And the public comment, we can just have them, just like they did today, wait out in the lobby and then come in.
So that would be eight, keeping eight on. The rest is just the board. Nine and ten.
I hate to make nine and ten wait, isn't that the?
Well, one of them's evergreen, we don't wanna postpone that.
No, let's, let's go ahead and do that.
And really, the naming of the, of the fields, I don't know that anybody really needs to speak to that.
I don't think so, do they?
I mean, they came and spoke at the workshop as-
To convince us to-
Yeah, I think, I think there's not any doubt that we're going to approve both of those. Maybe we can-
Can't put them in consent, can we? Because they're public hearings.
Do the public hearing, all right.
We can put them in consent.
No, we can't.
Because they're public hearings, yeah.
Even if there's somebody here, they can stay in the lobby and just come in for that.
So let's just keep them on.
Yeah. I don't wanna make them wait any longer because they're ready to do signage and make dates to do that.
And maybe if the public knows that we have come to consensus that this is something that we want, then they may be less inclined to come in.
Yeah.
Because they wouldn't feel like they had to convince us.
If they watch any of the school board meetings or listen to any of them, they'd know.
Right.
Well, and the timing of it, so I think that's best keeping it.
So, just keep them on.
I agree.
Just keep eight, nine and ten on.
Yep.
And seven, can we keep seven with Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
So you guys are in agreement, consensus with this, with those recommendations? Superintendent? I got consensus or not?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Everybody was right looking down. Okay, so that's what we'll do, Dr. Mary.
Thank you for that.
Anything else?
The minimum requirement for all recognition will be rejected back to the owner and able to put on at a later date and be adjourned.
Yes.
And then this would also include the item for cause that we talked about earlier. We're gonna add-
Need to add that. Anything else, Dr. Mary?
Yes. That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Attorney Green?
I have nothing, thank you.
Let me go back to Ms. McCall.
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Roar?
Just quickly, I was reminded by an older person today that our society has gotten to the point where we want what we want when we want it. We want it quickly and we definitely don't wanna wait. And so it does seem to be a new paradigm to have to adjust. And when you think back, it wasn't that long ago when people were being quarantined for measles and polio and scarlet fever and all kinds of things. So in some ways, this is unprecedented, but in other ways, it's not so much. So I think it's important to keep that perspective that I'm not looking at this as the potential end of the world as we know it. You know, we're, we always step up when our backs are against the wall. That's who Americans are. So I'm really grateful to have had this meeting today. I feel even more confident, you know, that we're just gonna get through this and do what we need to do. Keeping in mind that the only confusion that I've had conveyed to me is on the twelve-month employees. Some of them are still really unsure, you know, should I be coming in? Should I not be coming in? Why are the ones coming in, coming in? And then now I have to take vacation time? So if there could be a way to finesse that, I know that that would help our folks out a lot. And then my only other thing was speaking about staying within the contract. And again, maybe this is just me, it's like when your back's against the wall, you do what needs to be done. And there's always on our job descriptions where it says perform related duties as assigned. And I'm not sure how broad that goes. But I, again, I wanna say that I have confidence in our employees that if they're able to step up, they're going to. And this is a time, you know, to come together and do our thing. And no one's gonna judge you if you have to stay home with your kids. You're gonna find a way to help one way or another. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Roar. Ms. Stacy?
Y'all have done a good job.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, I'm good too. I think the staff has done a great job. And I just look forward, as Ms. Roar was saying, it's just the communication so people can just take a breath and know what's expected, and then they'll do it. But the uncertainty, but I think we're on that and I appreciate that, Dr. Grantham.
Ms. Presspatino?
I'm good.
Listen, guys, thank you again for coming out. I do want to thank you for just heeding the call so fast and saying, we'll be here. It shows your dedication and commitment to doing what's right for our committee, our community, our county. Dr. Mary, thank you. I know you've been on this all weekend. And I know all of you, all of us have been getting these calls and these emails and these correspondence from people. And I'm, I've gotten calls and I, my thing is I won't just tell a person anything just to get them off the phone. So if you're calling me and I say, I don't know the answer, I don't know the answer. I wanna make sure that I give you good information and tell you the truth about something. So it took us getting to this point here before we could answer some of those questions. Thank you to our community, our community, we have a wonderful, we have a wonderful community that steps up real fast. Without us even having to reach out to them, they started reaching out to us. So I thank them, I thank United Way, the Ocala Housing Authority and all those other partners that are going to be in this, this plan to making sure that Marion County's families are taken care of. So I thank you. But then finally, I do want to encourage everyone to pay attention to what's going on on TV, on these updates. Don't get-